So we're going to open the meeting at 6:33. Ryan, please take us through the introduction of the meeting.
Okay.
If you're ready.
Almost there. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Board of Selectment will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for more participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a note, this meeting is being digitally recorded and will be put on the town website and social media sites. An error of mine last week when I went to upload the video, I realized I did not hit the record button. So first time we've had that happen in this COVID era. So Bobby and I worked on getting the minutes. They're always very detailed, but making sure that they are that accurate record of proceedings and they are available to members of the public and will be posted as soon as they are approved.
Yeah, no big deal. Yep, no, no big deal. Ryan, I think maybe just for our own reminder, maybe right at the top of the, um, the agenda from now on, why don't we just make a little note for ourselves that, that, uh, that indicates that so we don't forget?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, well, um, we're going to move on to open session. Doesn't appear to be anybody there. Uh, any, any notes or chat items from, for, than anybody from, from, uh, Bobby or, or Ryan that you guys?
There are not, I have nothing and nothing was sent to us.
All right, so we're on to announcements. So we've got a couple of them. Uh, Katie feels like you should probably lead us off on this one.
Sure, we got Hubbardston Field Day coming up on September 19th with a rain day from nine to three at the Hubbardston Rec Field. We got lots of vendors, we got a bunch of different types of foods, we have a band playing all day. We will have a ceremony to dedicate the, the bandstand for, to David Tatten. And to my having count off contest, we have some demos of ukulele players, blacksmithing. To work out the details of the pottery guy where we're going back and forth, but it'll be a fun day. It's always free to enter and free to park, so it's, it's good family fun. Bring a chair and, or a camp chair or blanket to come sit on and just hang out and enjoy the day.
Okay, thank you, that's great. And we have the Library 5K, we, we've talked about both of these last couple of weeks. It sounds like a lot has come, um, uh, to fruition on the field day. Library 5K, that, that's, uh, the annual 5K the library puts on for 20 some odd years now. Mark would probably want me to know exactly what that number is because he's worked on for that long, but I don't remember. But anyway, the, the, Ryan, give us some details if you could.
Sure, so all the virtual, so this is a virtual race meeting that you can go to the track as it's normally run, which is marked currently, or run it in your own, on your own, on your own honor. And you send your times to Mark, um, no later than the 12th, which is Saturday. So need to get that done this week. My plan is to get that done on Thursday, so that'll, that'll be how I'll be closing my day with a nice run on the actual course, hoping, um, people will join me and participate, uh, before the, uh, the weekend's deadline.
All right, sounds good. Good luck to you, I will be doing the same with my daughters, so, um, so yeah, you're still in the under 40.
I'll wait till they're finished so they don't embarrass me again.
Okay, sounds good, we'll do it, cover the darkness. Okay, all right, so we're at the presentations, uh, we don't have any. And then we don't have any new business, we have plenty of new business, but nothing under item number four, Ryan, correct?
Correct.
All right, so on to more of the point of why we're having this, uh, this meeting, uh, so close to our last meeting, but we've got, we've got old business, something we talked about a lot last week is, uh, our special town meeting, which is, which is scheduled for September 24th.
Yeah, so I can get right into that if you want.
Yeah.
All right, so the things that have been decided are, uh, this board would like to meet on Thursday, September 24th as a town at seven o'clock at Hubbardston Center School. So we did reserve the school. We have a plan to make sure it's socially distanced. We have a draft that's been vetted by council. We sent out reminders to all board members and, um, online that the warrant was open. It closed today at noon. We got all the articles that, um, we believe will be submitted to include some from the planning board that unfortunately we aren't going to be able to include because, uh, the public hearing on Thursday did not have a quorum. And you need two weeks to hold a public hearing, so for any zoning bylaw change that goes to town meeting, that needs to be accomplished. It can't be advertised in time. So the, the special town meeting will be focused on the financial matters that were not closed at the end of last year because of, uh, the restrictions of COVID-19 and the uncertainty about the state and the school budget. So tonight, the board needs to review, and if it's ready, approve a special town meeting warrant, perhaps do your recommendations tonight on the warrant articles. And then also, um, either approve, recommend, or defer the decision on the budget recommendations that, that, um, myself and the finance team made to you. Those are the decisions that are needed for a special town meeting. If that can be accomplished tonight, then we will post this warrant tomorrow. We need your signatures tomorrow, uh, timely in order to get the warrant posted, which has to happen tomorrow in order to have a Thursday's special time meeting on the 24th. And then we will mail a postcard to all residents telling them that we have this meeting and promote it like crazy on social media to, to attempt to get a quorum.
Can you send us, as long as things go as planned, uh, tonight? Can you send us all a reminder that, that we have to, and the details and where we have to go and that sort of thing for signatures?
Yes, so I will be emailing it the copy tonight to our town clerk. She will be certifying the warrant and, um, pending your signatures. It's, as long as we can get that done by noon tomorrow with three of you, then it is legally binding and we can post it. But I will send that out tonight and tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'll be there tomorrow at eight, so anytime between eight and noon, I guess.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, what else?
So that's, um, if you would like to go through the warrant, I can give you details, go through the budget, however you want to start this.
There's not much to it, let's go through it.
So let me call that up. All right, so I'm going to work on the most explainable version of what we need to do in article one. But essentially, what we are doing is amending the budget as was voted at the June town meeting. Now, we told everyone who went to the June town meeting that this was going to happen, that we needed to adjust the budget. The two reasons are state aid came in much higher than we expected, which is a good surprise. And the school, uh, committee did a great job, uh, using last year's savings in order to reduce their operating assessment and give the town some relief on the school side assessment. So we need to go up on some expenses, which I can get into detail on, and down some expenses. The way we're accomplishing this is, um, when we say here in article one, "to raise and appropriate by taxation", that means property taxes that's allowed by Prop 2 and a half, plus any offsets from local receipts and state aid. So we put 150,000 free cash into the budget in June. What we're going to do is increase our raise and appropriate and decrease our free cash, if you approve this, to last year's free cash level, which is 100,000. So a lot of, uh, municipal finance there, but basically we're using less free cash and taking advantage of the savings from the, the unexpected revenue from state aid in order to level fund some of our costs from last year, pay for the increased school assessment and move on into FY21 with a balanced budget.
Okay.
So this language has been vetted many, many times by council. Now, Dan, I don't know if you want me to go through them all and then do your recommendations, if you want to do each one?
I think you should go through them all.
Okay. So this, this will be, this is, is become norm in the last couple of years. There will be a document outlining all the line items. Any line items that have changed, you'll see in the budget presentation are highlighted, and there's not many. The moderator should give everyone a chance to comment on any of the changes, and then the budget we voted in whole. And it's an amended budget, so just small changes from, from, uh, the June town meeting. Same thing with article two. Article two is the Quavon Regional School District Assessment. We called that out individually for the request of some residents and some town officials to make it more transparent. So this sum of $4,879,933 is a little more than 14,000 more than the assessment that we passed at town meeting. So the school committee took the number that we passed at town meeting and they put it into the state aid formula. And because of changes to our minimum local contribution, which are based off of essentially property values and, um, household income, our part of the assessment increased by 14,000.
Let me just jump in real quick though, so the number we approved was much less than, uh, what the school committee had recommended.
Correct. It, it, it took into account what the school committee had been talking about at the time of town meeting, which was a million dollar reduction in their overall budget based off the savings from FY20 and COVID going remote for the rest of the year and enabled them a savings of a million dollars last year. So they use that money to offset the assessments and reduce it down. So we knew that, we used that number intentionally because it was the best information we had at the time, and it ended up being the one the school committee went with. So educated guess that, um, put everybody on the same page, so to speak. So this article two amends that vote for, because it was rejected by, by most of the towns, it, it essentially passes the school budget if four of the five towns do. And we're recommending myself and the finance team that this be passed or recommended to town meeting. And I can get, I know, I'm trying to get the jargon out in the municipal speak, so please stop me at any time and I can explain things over and over again if you, if, if you need to. All right, so then the next one is essentially a request to put some savings away. So because of that change in local aid on the revenue side, we have, um, more than what we normally try and set aside in free cash. So we usually say, we're not going to use 100,000 of our free cash so that we can offset its use in the operating budget next year. It's like a just in case, that's very important to the resiliency of our budget. So we have an additional 15,000, if you take the recommendations that we're giving you, that we're recommending that we put into capital stabilization. And this is because we used 60,000 in the fall to pay for the Hubbardston Center School roof feasibility study. And we should be recouping a lot of that money, 60% of it, from, uh, the MSBA once that project starts. So this is just returning money back to our 1% target in the capital savings account that we have.
So this is a different number than it was last time we saw it, right? Where, where was the calculation error?
So the calculation error was in article four, perfect segue. So, um, I had, this was just a math error. This total is 174,000 because it didn't carry on my spreadsheet. So the difference in the savings amount is the difference that we would be spending here in the capital budget. So the, again, the two changes to the capital budget that were going to be recommended at town meeting and were deferred because of the COVID impact on the budget is 5,000 extra. We'd, we're adding for the, uh, police vehicle cameras so that we can just get that project done. And as I've stated, it's, it's, given the climate of the world, as, as much as we can invest in protecting our residents and our police using, uh, modern technology, the better. Not that we have an issue with that, but we just never want to. So I just want to get that project done if we can. And then, um, two more here. This one is our exhaust mitigation system. We had to send this back out for additional engineering. You know, we don't think we'll need this much to cover the project that was approved almost a year and a half ago now. But we want to make sure that we can complete this project. It's out to bid right now, we expect the bids to close at the end of this month. And, uh, we expect to have this completed by the end of this calendar year. So this 15,000 will make sure that we get that done. We might not need it at all, I just want to make sure that nothing else holds this project up. And for those who don't remember.
Ryan, transferring the $15,000 from the free cash backup to 100,000?
Yes. Say that again, I'm sorry.
You said you wanted to transfer the free $15,000 from free cash to stabilization, is that what it was?
That was, yes, that's in addition to this capital recommendation.
Okay, so what will the stabilization account with that transfer?
Show you.
Scroll it up.
So this is our reserve or savings accounts as they currently exist. We have four, the general stabilization, which is your general savings.
We can't see anything different.
So this is the proposed town reserve, you can see this now, the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay, so the four savings accounts, and I'm calling them that, but they, they have their own names. Stabilization is general, uh, general savings for what the town needs. Capital stabilization can only be used for capital projects. Free cash is free cash, it is unexpendited monies or under projected revenues that the town has available for, for purchases. And then the road stabilization count, which was passed as part of the override attempt last year, that exists on the books but doesn't have any money. So based off the financial policies that we have, we'd like our stabilization to be 5% of the operating budget, the capital to be 1% and free cash. We'd like to generate 5%, but keep 100,000. So if we did everything that's been recommended here on the budget, our stabilization would be at 4.47. The 15,000 here would be added to the 42,350 we have, that would bring us to 0.61 or a total of 57,000, and then we'd be reserving 100,000 in free cash. So that would be the state of our reserve accounts.
Wait, just, just to, uh, to note, um, you know, because I, I was at some of our, our local towns or neighboring Quavon towns, board meetings over the last, you know, 12 months or so. You know, there's, there's a couple of these towns that have zero in some of these accounts, in some of the major accounts here too. So, you know, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so, um, that's the exhaust mitigation system. So currently for that project, we have 50,000 and the bids are out right now. So, um, we estimated that it would be somewhere between 40 and 60, which is why the, it could be, we could have already have the money, or you could need some additional funding to complete this project. The, the part that was missing from the bid the last time was the electrical work that's needed. So we needed to include that in the bid just to make sure that we, we got this bid done correctly. And the last thing that was added, if you remember in the fall, our, uh, police department's ceiling fell in the, we call the bullpen area, but in the, in the walkway where our, our officers use their computers. Luckily, no one was injured, but we had to, uh, spend some emergency money to fix that. And there are sections remaining, we're calling it section two or the, the B part of this project that we are concerned about, we certainly don't want them to fall in. So we're asking to add 10,000 to fix that part of the ceiling. And we think that's more than enough to get that accomplished. So that total equals 216,800. If you combine, and I can show you this in spreadsheet form as well, but we have 284,000 in free cash. If you spend 216 on capital and then 15,000 on savings, and then you add the 50,000 that we're not using in the operating budget, that gives you 102,000 to roll into next year.
Okay.
So that's the capital. The other items were items that were, uh, recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and were recommended by this board and FinCon before COVID. That was a asphalt hotbox for, and a dump truck for the DPW. A, this says DPW, but it's really cemetery, a leaf backpack and walk behind blower. The bandstand roof for, for the Curtis Rec Field, which we know we need to fix. And then paving the, um, back section and unimproved sections of the slate building parking lot. Article five is the one remaining amendment change, and it's because it's a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, so it doesn't need a, um, it doesn't need a public hearing. So this is something the board and the planning board discussed. And it's making sure that the planning board associate member is a resident of the town. Right now, by our bylaws, they don't have to be. So this was something that came out of discussions the last couple of years, and the board wanted to get done. To fully complete this and change the zoning bylaws, it'd also be a public hearing, but this would change the general bylaws. So we figured, why not get it done? That is the will of town meeting. And then the last article, article six, is the easement that's necessary to allow the regional communication center, uh, the RRECC to, uh, construct and make sure that they can fix, if necessary, a tower they're putting up at 21 Gardner Road to improve our communications in town, specifically our dispatch. It's a project that's existed for a long time, was discussed in detail at the last meeting. This easement is necessary to allow them to use our town land and construct this, which we are hoping would be completed by the end of the winter.
Have you received any follow-up from, from, or any communication? Uh, and I don't mean like at all, but overall, you know, we had a few things that we had discussed with them, we were interested in. Has any of that, uh, you know, in the last week?
From the communication center?
Yeah.
No, no additional, no additional conversation. Uh, they did take back the, uh, the fact that we were willing to do the easement so quickly and commit our DPW, which means that the project is now back on them to, uh, start the, start the bidding process really, as, uh, they've already secured the financing.
Okay.
And I should say, this plan is available at the town clerk's office and will be available on the town meeting website, which we will promote heavily.
Okay, so if we, if it's so willed by the board here, um, can we both approve and close in one, um, motion?
Yes.
Ryan, can you help me, help me understand what happened to the electric sign article again, please?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. So the signed bylaw, this was recommended by the Economic Development Committee and was worked on a lot by the planning board. They have a pretty good product, we sent it to council, there wasn't a lot to, to work on. It was going to go to public hearing on Thursday. So it's, you need to have a public hearing on any zoning bylaw change prior to town meeting so that the planning board can report to the residents of the town any issues or concerns or, or good things that came from the public hearing. So Thursday, they weren't able to get a quorum. The planning board did not continue the meeting, so they would have to re-advertise a public hearing and you need two weeks to advertise. So we did check to see if the Gardner News, which is part of the requirements, could post. They, they cannot post on a 24-hour notice, um, and they, they weren't available to discuss this on Monday. So we can't get the public hearing done on the 23rd, which was our last ditch effort. So this will come up again, it's not dead, it just can't happen in the timeframe of this town meeting. Nor can any of the other, uh, zoning changes that the planning board talked to about last week, which were some housekeeping items, um, that they've been looking to do for a while.
And so the root cause is the zoning board's failure to come up with a quorum.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions, additional questions about the warrant or, um, uh, or anything else relative to this item? Okay, well, let's, I think we should probably, um, move on.
You want, you want a motion, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, six articles on the special town meeting warrant as presented by town administrator.
And close the warrant, could you have that?
And, and close the warrant, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's seconded. Uh, any discussion? Uh, okay, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, sounds good, thank you. Uh, all right, Ryan, so we have some other stuff relative to fiscal year 21 budget revision. Do, do we need to get to any of that before we move on?
So the, voted to approve the warrant, um, you, you don't have to do this tonight, but normally you would recommend or not the, the articles. Uh, and that would include some of the budget stuff, which can change all the way up to town meeting to include amending it on the floor. So it doesn't have to happen tonight, but you could finalize that if you want or not. The difference would be you would do it at town meeting.
No, we can, we can do it, so, so I don't really fully understand what you just said.
So you have to, um, you should and have in the past offered a recommendation on the individual warrant articles.
All right, so, well, okay, let me just stop you real quick, so I did hear that, obviously. So, so what we just did was approve the warrant, but we didn't officially recommend any of the articles? And now we need to officially recommend each article?
Just to be clean, yes.
Okay, I don't remember doing it like this before.
Do we have to do them one at a time, or can we do it as a group that we recommend?
Yeah.
Six articles as presented, can we do something like that?
You can do them all at once if you want.
Okay, uh, I'll make another motion that, uh, we, uh, recommend all six of the articles of the special town meeting as presented by the town administrator.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, dissension about that from the board? Uh, I don't see none, okay, we'll vote, uh, roll call, be Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
It is unanimous, okay, sounds good, I think we got all that stuff done. So it'll be up to us to, uh, uh, pay attention to whatever correspondence comes from you tonight, assuming all that comes through, and then we'll have to get those signatures on to, to move to the next step in the process.
Yeah, so if you can't make it tomorrow morning, then I'll send out, you know, private correspondence to each of you individually. But just let us know, because all of this is for not, if we don't get it signed and posted tomorrow.
Bobby, you said you'd be there until noon, is that correct?
I'll be there all day, but I think we need it by noon.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we, uh, we're going to move on, Karen?
Yep.
All right, so next we're up to five, uh, C and D, we'll start with five C. And that is the Board of Selectment fiscal year 21 goals. So, uh, Ryan, can you call up our 2020 goals? Okay, thank you, all right, so I'm just trying to think about the format for this. It's, um, we, we briefly delved into it, you know, a couple of meetings ago, but, but as we, when we established sort of when, uh, when to get these in. But I'm thinking that the format's going to be this, so I'm, I'm going to just, I'm going to go through each of these that we have up here because that's something that we should do. And then I'll, I'll, uh, list a couple of, uh, goals that I, I think we, we could consider. And then from any of you who got to me directly, I'll sort of give you the floor to, to go over the ones that you, uh, recommended. And then if, uh, when we get through that, then anyone will have the opportunity to add any goals that they didn't get to me on, um, to sort of finish that process, and then we can, we can go from there. Is that okay? Uh, sound okay with everybody?
Okay.
Yep.
All right, um, so, so what I did was, when I, I did my own sort of review, um, of this, uh, just real quick, I won't, want to, you know, belabor the, the, the process here, but basically went through each of these, these bullet items and, and sort of crossed them off, either in my opinion that we did them or that maybe we, we need to revise them or not. But I'll sort of explain what I mean, and feel free, I know I talk fast sometimes, but feel free anybody to, um, to, to jump in at any time. But I'm just going to start at the top, might as well get going. So the first one is to prioritize road maintenance by committing to large and small repair projects as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 road maintenance plan. Continue to invest money into road repair if possible and communicate the status of the plan to the public on a semi-annual basis. My opinion is, is we've done that and I, we should continue to do that. I mean, roads has always been, um, hugely important, I think, over the last four or five years with our road maintenance plan, uh, establishment and, and following it, we've, we've helped that along. We, we tried to get, um, an override in place to, to specifically focus on roads, which, which I think we, we sort of talked about maybe trying again in the future, so I, I think this one is, is one of those ones that everybody in the town would have. So I, I think this one is, is one of those ones that everybody in the town would agree with. So my opinion is to just sort of, to keep that going. Um, uh, the next one is continue to develop a plan to replace, repair, restore municipal building space. Um, this is one, you know, that, that we asked Ryan, um, you know, as daunting as the task is to think about the, the money and the time and all that stuff for municipal building space is. Um, to focus on himself, you know, this is, this is another one of those items that, um, you know, you know, feels like we, we. I don't really wanna be someone who sticks their head in the sand and just pretends it's not a problem and, and that it's, you know, we're only gonna be, you know, at this, in these positions for so many years and then somebody else has to deal with it. So I think keeping the conversation going on those. So I, I really feel strongly about those first two, that the first one is, is just so important to the town. The second one is just important to, you know, prosperity. It just has to get done eventually. So to continue the conversation feels like a good decision to me. Um, the next one, which was empower the Economic Development Committee to continue to remove obstacles for smart growth. Analyze bylaws, procedures and town staff practices to make them business supportive and friendly. So I, you know, I, I think this was a, um, a, a novel idea. I don't know how much of that specifically we did. It seems very specific when I sort of reread it. Uh, when I look at smart growth and, and sort of the, what that means and, and, um, sort of, uh, go from there. So I, in, you know, I, I think that, you know, we, we probably didn't do that. Um, and analyzing bylaws and procedures, but, but I, I sort of have a recommendation and I'm sure you guys do about, uh, some additional EDC, um, collaboration. Uh, but I, I was sort of thinking, we, we didn't quite get to that one and that one doesn't feel as important. Not important, wrong word, but doesn't feel like it's, um, maybe worded correctly for us to, to succeed on at this time. So I don't know what anyone thinks about that, but. Um. The next was investigate and execute the sale use of town-owned land. Um, you know, we, we've had, uh, you know, I, some, some luck with that, right? So we, we sold some land and we're gonna be trying to sell some more. Um, so I, you know, I think we, we, um, we were pretty successful as, as we get down a little bit lower. I'll, I'll discuss it again, maybe collaborating or combining a couple of items. But, you know, I think that, you know, we've, we took that as a focus and, and I think I, I actually was on the other side of, of, of a vote to continue on with that. So that, that process is actually gonna continue, um, continue, continue on at the will of the board. So, so, you know, we, we did deal with it. Um, the next one is to continue to develop a transparent budget process that aligns with financial policies, goals and reduces reliance on one-time revenues. I think we've done that. I think, uh, you know, through Ryan, without a doubt, um, he's just, uh, championed sort of the effort to get to these percentages we were talking about and not have to rely on, um, uh, on free cash like we have. Um, you know, I think we were really scared that this bullet was gonna get worse this year. Um, uh, because of, you know, sort of good fiscal management, conservatism and some luck. Um, we, we were able to, to sort of, uh, get, get to a point where, um, you know, I think the, the path forward is, is, you know, um, something that, you know, I'm definitely looking forward to. So I think we've, we've done our best to meet that goal. Um, the next one's developing plans for large impactful projects like increasing town cellular service and working with the Planning Board to reclaim the town pit. Um, you know, I, I think we've done this as well. We've just begun the, the, the Planning Board to, the reclaim the town pit portion of it. But we've, we've obviously worked on, um, and nearly there with the, you know, primary, uh, tasks. To get a tower up that will increase cellular service. So I was happy to see that. A, as I said on bullet four above, investigate, execute the sale use of town-owned land. I almost combined that with, with, you know, reclaiming the town pit. It's a utilization of stuff that we have. So, um, you know, that, that sort of, you know, goes in there. Um, the next one is develop a stronger working relationship with the Quavon Regional School District and begin to address annual assessment and equities within the region. I think we've absolutely done that too. Um, Ryan, um, I, just real quick. Uh, I, I believe, you know, our, our process over the last couple of years of patience and transparency and all that stuff. With the Quavon Regional School District, avoiding, you know, really butting heads, even if we wanted to at times, has improved. Would, would you agree?
Oh, I, I think so. I, I think if I was to assess it. The, the feeling on the, on the Quavon Regional side is that we, we do look for ways to support our students and to make sure that we are investing in the school district, especially in the capital side. In the operating budget. Um, some of the tensions come from focus number five, which is, you know, trying to align our financial goals with our revenues, which, with our long-term planning. So I think that's normal and if the relationship can continue to develop, then we should be able to join in. You're never gonna always agree, but a, a long-term strategy to, to make the town, you know, not reliant on that assessment every single year. So it's gonna be a long process, but I think progress is being made.
Okay, thank you. And I agree in the second half of that, which is to address annual assessment equities within the region. You know, um, as you guys know, I was reporting back to you, I had met with three of the other, of select boards to sort of align, uh, all of us together when, uh, when we could. To get in early with how much we could afford on an annual basis to the schools. Um, with one more, um, meeting set with the Braintree, but then COVID hit and that all, uh, got the brakes put on. So I, I definitely plan on rekindling that and I, I think, just to remind everybody and Katie's who's new here. Um, I, I, the, the plan was for me after meeting with all four other towns, with all five of us, is to put together a summary of that. So I took notes at all these and circulated to all the different boards for, you know, any comments anyone would have. And then just put together a document that says, hey, you know, start somewhere, uh, in August of year twenty-two or whatever year it would come. Let's all get together early. This is how much we can afford and go to the schools with it. So we're not making a secret behind the school's back that we're doing this. We're just trying to get together as, you know, five similarly, um, focused towns. Um, who, who fund, you know, most of what our, our regional school district needs. So, um, that, that was that. And then, uh, the last one, which was coordinate with the Parks Department to execute their five-year strategic plan and ensure the long-term viability of, of the Curtis Recreational Field. You know, I, I know we, we, um, uh, you know, have some items that we've, uh, approved or discussed. Uh, I don't know, we've done much of coordinating with the Parks Department, so I don't think we've, we've really hit that goal. Um, uh, but I, I think it's really important. I mean, we don't have many, um, facilities, uh, or assets. Um, like the Curtis Recreational Field, you know, it's, it's, it's our, it's our, one of our jewels. It really is. And, um, it's up there tonight and we need to make sure that it's around for a long time. And I know that there's a, a new playground that's gonna be coming. I know we just talked about the bandstands or other, there are things on there, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure more will come as well. So, all right, well, that's the sort of quick assessment of, of the goals that we have from last year. Um, I'm sort of sick of hearing myself talk, so I'm actually gonna go a little bit out of order here. And I, Katie, I'd like to go to you, because you had, um, uh, you know, sent me some ideas that you had about, you know, goals for our fiscal year twenty-one. Do you mind, um, um, uh, you know, starting that discussion?
Sure, why not? Um, so yeah, my idea for, um, one of our goals should be to, I think. And I, I don't want this to come off as the select board being pushy or nosy or trying to get involved and overstepping. But I think we do need to be more involved in our other committees and boards in town for a few reasons. One, to be there if they have questions or need answers or, or if, if they, you know, to follow the agenda of the master plan, which we're all supposed to be trying to get involved with and get done, um, for the town's sake. But also to be able to, like, I always hear you, Dan, report over all these years, watching all these lovely little videos of the select board, reporting back on certain committees. Well, it shouldn't all fall on you, but also on top of that, there's way more boards and committees that trying to get the word out about what is actually going on in town. And who's doing what and whatever is very difficult, I have found over the years. It's getting much better, don't get me wrong. But we still have a lot of hurdles and a lot of stuff that people don't realize they're working on. And some of the stuff that some of these boards and committees are working on are really good ideas or good projects. But I think that it would be better if, maybe if us as selectmen, we all took our liaison positions that, you know, the boards and committees. And try to go to their, especially right now, their virtual meetings, which is kind of easy. You can sit in your living room quietly and just listen to what's going on. And be able to not only, A, inform the rest of the select board what's going on, but the rest of the town. And also be there to, if they need help or anything from us, seeing that, you know, my whole theory is lead by example. So I would like to put in there that we start going more towards our committees and boards that are, that were the liaisons for. And attending more things and to get the word out and to also help anyone that needs it.
Yeah, I think it's great. And, and as I had sort of indicated to you earlier today, so, so, right, it is easier on the COVID thing. So I, over the last few months, I did actually pop into a couple of meetings. I popped into the Board of Health meeting. I popped into a Planning Board meeting and a Conservation Commission meeting. Uh, the Board of Health was because of COVID, the Planning Board was too, and Conservation, I was just interested to, and you're right, it was received. It's not, there's no like, oh, we're being watched. It was like, I could, it was a little bit of a, um, um, energy. I'm not, I'm not gonna lie. That was sort of put into things. So I, I think it is, um, um, it is, it is a good thing. And leading by example, I think is the right way to put it. So I, I think that's an excellent goal. Okay, um, I have a couple more I can go into now than, than anyone else can. So I, I, you know, I. I know it's summer and today was eighty-five degrees again or whatever, but I've just been thinking about this and, you know, since we first started talking about it. And, you know, my, the way I wrote it down was this and, you know, it's, this is not the best way to, uh, I mean, I didn't need, you know, I didn't think about how much I was writing it down. But basically, work on, uh, sustainable options for seniors relative to senior center being closed now and in the future for COVID, you know. So I, I, I think it hasn't, even though it's been a problem. Um, you know, I just, we don't, nobody knows when this is gonna improve. And, um, you know, I kind of feel like it, it's, that's a, you know, it's a really important part of our town is our seniors. And so if we can do something to help, um, the other, uh, boards and committees that are efforting to, to help them reopen in some way, shape or form, especially when it starts to get cold, whether that's renting space or, I don't know. And I know that there's no money for anything. Like, I'm not just trying to, you know, make up things here, but I just, you know, I, I think, um, you know, I think it's not a bad idea for us to, um, to, to put some focus on how we can help the seniors who, who are already limited and, and maybe what they can do at times. And, and when, when one of their only, um, avenues for, for, um, you know, being able to, to, you know, participate in certain things goes away. Because of what's going on in the country, it's, 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 you know, it's sad. So anyway, um, it's just something I was, uh, thinking maybe we could, we could, uh, we could discuss. Um. Uh, let's see. Um. So here's another one. So this was kind of when I, when I mentioned something about the, the third, um, bullet point up there about the Economic Development Committee and, and the way the smart growth was on there. I, I do think that maybe, um, maybe this. So I just wrote down, work with Economic Development Committee, committee. To use the Route sixty-eight South, North and the two thousand twenty-two Town Center projects as centerpieces to attract small business. Um, you know, in a, in a beautified Route sixty-eight corridor, right? I mean, we're never gonna get an opportunity like this where in a, in a year and a half or so, or, or two years, whatever it's gonna be. We're gonna have this eight-mile corridor that's gonna be, people are just gonna be driving through Rutland and driving through Gardner, come the other way. And they're gonna go through this like area where it's, you know, um, it's just redone and rebuilt and fits the area and all that stuff. So, um, in preparation, we're not there yet, um, but, you know, it, it feels like it's something we can get in there early with our Economic Development Committee. Who I know is working on this. I know we're limited in options. I know all these things have been around a while. But still, um, we, we've, we've, uh, i- if we're gonna have a, uh, an opportunity to, to jump on the, the one time or two times in a generation. That this sort of a thing is gonna happen, um, you know, I think we're, we're there now or we're getting close to it. So that was just maybe, maybe another idea. So. Anyway, um, those are just a couple of the goals I had. Um, I don't know if anybody else wants to, uh, to add to that. Um, and, um, uh, we can go, sort of go from there. Anyone else wanna, wanna add to that?
I'd like to just jump in for a minute, Dan, and it's listening to you. Excuse me, I'm looking at what I wrote down for tonight's meeting. It's as if I already talked to you about some of the things that I felt strongly about. But to, uh, support what you are saying, one, that we've accomplished or have handled pretty well. And also that we should, uh, keep working on, I second that motion in terms of, um, the roads. And, um, the, um, space. I wrote down, space continues to be a problem. Is it time to revisit our building needs? And then I wrote, again, we continue to be spending money on the slave building. At what point does good, are we, uh, spending good money for bad? Uh, and you can reinforce that with the point you just made about the senior citizens. They need space. Um, it's just a thought, but my, my feeling is. How much longer are we going to maintain this building until maybe it falls on the select board and then something gets done about it? But, uh, it's, we seem to every, every year that I've been on, I have to do something, uh, financially to keep that, uh, temporary, temporary quote unquote, building, uh, standing. So that, uh, I feel finally that, uh, maybe it's time we re, re, revisit. The building needs again. I know it, it, it has a lot of opposition in town and, but we, I think we may now have a little bit more support for it. But that was one of my strong feelings on that. Um, and the last thing you were mentioning, and I wrote this down, keeping, continue seeking ways of making our town more attractive for future businesses. Because the bottom line is and has been as long as you and I have been on the board, we need revenue. And the more attractive and the more ways we can try to be creative and try to encourage people to come here and, uh, do the, have business. Uh, I'm really hoping, for example, the development of the town pit. I went to the pit with that whole group and so forth, and I hope something positive does come out of it. Because I think we are badly in need of some kind of income sources other than simply our property taxes.
Okay, great, Jeff. I appreciate that. Um, and, um, all right, um, still open. Anyone else want to add to this, uh, conversation?
Well, for the whole EDC thing, um, coming from, thus, you know, being on that board. I will tell you that the signed by law is the first of one of the few bylaws that we're looking at when I was on it changing. And now we're still waiting, unfortunately. Um, but we, I'm not even gonna talk about that, because that just made me mad. But anyway, stuff happens. So anyway, moving on, I have, after the signed by law goes through. Because I, we can only push so much stuff on to the, you know, Planning Board, um, to change. But, uh, what we were looking at was doing an overlay district for businesses very specifically on sixty-eight. That would have to fall into a certain criteria and you'd still have to go in front of the planning board. So it wouldn't be a whole, everything can come in and all willy-nilly, but allowing people to not have to live in the property to have a business. Other than the separate right there in the center of town, because our business district is not big enough. In order to have business that's going to support us in the long run. So if you're, we're going to have more businesses come in, we need to do an overlay district. So anyway, that's on the works for that, but yeah, I'm definitely helping kick the can down, go on with this economic development. We're trying to get some smart ideas in there and trying to work with all the businesses like I was before when I was actually on the committee. So we are working on that, but yeah, definitely I think we, we, we need to help that board for sure, move some stuff down the pipe.
Okay, great. Um, anything else from anybody on this?
I'd like to ask a question if I could, of, um, Ryan, I guess. Um, where are we in terms of the town, uh, with the, uh, proposed businesses for the marijuana sales as well as growth?
So I, I would want, I would want to prepare a more detailed answer, but generally speaking, the applicant is working currently with the Planning Board on the permitting process. And like every, every comment we have these days, it has been delayed by COVID. But there has been communication and it, it is not stalled. It's just not moving as quickly as possible. And given that the growing season's over, I imagine that now would be the time that they're going to engage again. And given that the growing season's over, I imagine that now would be the time that they're going to engage again on getting set up for the spring. So that's making a lot of generalizations, but that is essentially where we're at with that.
Thank you.
Make weed when the sun shines. All right, um, okay. Anything else, anyone? All right, uh, well, thanks, everybody. So what, what I, I think maybe we can do now is I'll, um, I've compiled, uh, I, I have a recording here that I can re- re-listen to, but I, I've written down a lot of this stuff anyway. So I will, uh, what I think, uh, just came from that, uh, discussion, uh, and I will distribute to everybody. And then, uh, if you can, I'll put the, the, the information in the email as well. And if you could just respond directly to me with whether you have any comments on any changes or you misinterpret or interpret it a different way. And I'll call through all those comments and we'll get to a point where I feel like it's a finished product. Um, and then I will send that to, to Ryan and Bobby and we can add it to, uh, whatever meeting, our next meeting or, or whatever. Uh, we're gonna talk about our next meeting in a second, um, on, on when that next meeting's gonna be, um, for a formal approval. Does that sound all right to everybody?
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, sounds good. So that, that was, that was great. So, uh, we'll move on and the next would be the town administrator goals.
I just said words that nobody, nobody heard, but I'm just gonna pop it up on the screen for you. So besides generally believing that, that goals are a good strategy, um, I don't think that's very controversial. Uh, I use the goal-setting process for your, your directing of my work. So as you can imagine.
Ryan, just real quick, was one of those goals to put it up on the screen?
Yes. I was gonna talk a little first.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know if you, I.
I didn't do it. Let me see. Hey, great. So I use the goals to direct my work. So as you can imagine, there's a thousand things I can focus on. And what I want to do is focus on the things that align with your goals and, um, what you want to see happen with the town. So, um, I propose these goals more for you to tell me that, yes, focus your attention on these. And then, um, it also tells me how to, how to, how to get my work done besides the normal stuff that's prescribed in the, the town bylaws and the town charter. So I break them up into groups of what I think is important for me to focus on. Community outreach, department development, which is really management of our, our departments and staff. Human resources, which is one of my hats, being a human resource director. Budget and finance, which is dictated by charter. And then infrastructure, which, um, day one on the job here, I realized, um, how important infrastructure is to every community, but specifically to this one. So I've done, um, most of my professional development and work, trying to make sure that I'm matching the energy that this town has for infrastructure improvement. And then I have my goals on the bottom that, um, we ask all of our staff to do, which is professional development, vision and department goals. So I reviewed my goals with you about a month ago now. So these are the things that, that I'm recommending that I work on. And what I'm looking for is some feedback, maybe go by section on if you want to subtract, delete, you know, don't focus on that. Do focus on that or think about it in a different way. And, um, a lot of this is called from previous conversations and conversations that I have with each of you. So, um, I know that some of it will be like, yes, that's what we want you to focus on. So in community, when I say establish EDC position and goals, so you heard several times mentioned in your goals, the EDC. And, and I realize the value of that committee. The board and myself cannot focus as much on economic development as this town needs. So having a, a well-done EDC with what is the start of a position that focuses on it here in Hubbardston would be very important to, um, to economic development goals. I'd like to commit to community office hours. Um, I had a plan for that and then COVID, right, which we keep saying. So, um, we're gonna have to find a different way to do that. The master plan, I think is really important to all the stuff you're talking about and could focus not only this board, but future boards. So that is, is definitely something that the community needs. And then other projects that the board has directed me on, including using some of our town land for forestry planning, which is a revenue source, cell service, which is good for economic development, public safety, and then continuing to focus on town-owned land. I'll stop there unless there's, if no one stops me, I'll just keep going. Okay, for, um, for departments, and thi- this one might fit in a different category, but I'm just trying to think of a name that would make sense to folks. But I'd like to have a Hubbardson twenty-thirty workshop with all boards. So what would this town like to be in ten years? I know I've introduced this in, in theory a couple of times. But, um, the master plan, the town center project, the economic development committee, the, um, stuff we've done with green communities and MVP planning, it, it just needs, it needs a full focus. And I think having a, a workshop or two this year would be a great start towards aligning all of these goals. As Katie was talking about in, in your goals, communicating with all boards. In, in my, in my view, a, how does this fit into our ten-year plan for all the boards and departments? Would really help focus a lot of the volunteer effort and make some of these really good products they're doing fit into a bigger puzzle. And I think that also leads into some of the comments about using space and some feedback I got from Dan and other members of the board that, you know, it's not enough to just say we need a building. It's gotta fit into a bigger picture financially and how we can accomplish it incrementally. Because no one here wants to, to whack the taxes all at one time and nor would that get approved. So I think this is one way to accomplish that. And it's not just a planning exercise, it's, it's a roadmap. So Quavon Regional District, um, I, I try and develop that relationship all the time with them and we meet pretty consistently. So there's, there's never gonna be full agreement on everything in any departments, but that's definitely a focus. Uh, the five-year IT plan. So now that we've completed the plan, I want to make sure that, that I give you another plan for you to, to follow to make sure that we stay up on technology. And never is that more important than right now when we, we had to revert to just technology for a while. Um, and luckily we had the infrastructure in place and that was a focus so that we could commit to that. So a five-year plan would be what's next? When do we replace things and what's that gonna cost and getting that in the capital plan? Uh, department head meetings, making sure that I'm not wasting their time, but that we are in sync. They're all very great and it's easy to sometimes think that everybody's aligned. I just want to make sure that quarterly we are. And that lines up a lot with the budget process. I want to investigate, um, online permitting capabilities and make sure that you understand what that may or may not cost or may or may not do. Because every town's gonna be there at some point. So it's just when, when does Hubbardston get there and when does it make sense financially? And then create a pandemic emergency plan for town administration. Um, I think this is every town administrator's goal now. Not that we didn't have an emergency plan, but, you know, we've never expected to do what we've had to do. And I would hate to lose this opportunity to give some people some lessons learned, um, for hopefully the next time this doesn't happen, but it might. I'll stop there briefly.
Okay, um, so I actually don't know which one this would fit our departments, human resources, the budget and finance. But, you know, we, we, and you have worked so hard over the, the last few years to, to, um, uh, to make sure that, you know, the town employees, um, not only, you know, feel sort of part of the team and understand their importance, you know, to us as a town, but that they're compensated appropriately. And so I think it's, it'd be, it'd be good to have, uh, just because it shows also the select board's, um, commitment to it for a, you know, an annual review of, uh, um, compensation, you know, and what step people are on and, and that sort of stuff, just to so that, you know, it's not like, okay, we do it every two years and, you know, or every four years. And, you know, we've checked a box and we've sort of made it. You know, it's more than that. So, um, it's so important to us. Continuity is so important to a small town like us. We just, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to, to make that a, a focus, um, you know, for a, a, on, you know, next year's goal.
Okay, I can, um, I have a plan for that. So I will, uh, I will get back to you on that.
Did we review it already?
No, it's so, we review the compensation and wage plan, but what I'm hearing you say is you want to make sure that it, it still matches what we need. So I'm thinking that, um, that could be more robust and that would accomplish that goal and, uh, would require some, you know, some research and some planning to bring to the board for, for that conversation that we normally have in February. So, um, I think that's, that's doable.
Okay. That's all I had on that one.
All right, so human resources. Um, so our, I had a conversation on the way home today about our human resources guide. I'm updating, you know, and making sure all of our policies are consistent is a lot harder than it sounded when I started this. But we should have, also, they should all go up online for every staff member to review for the next two weeks, uh, by the end of this week. And then you will get them on the twenty-eighth and UMass will come and talk to you about what they did to update the policies and where our gaps are in terms of human resources and how we might fix that. So this is, this is taking longer than, than I hoped, but it was done right. So you'll get, you'll get the report on that on the twenty-eighth. But we're a little bit into the year, which is why this is one of the goals. Updating all employee folders. So I started this project and that's really what it sounds like, like just making sure that there's a document for everything that's needed in every employee folder. Uh, it's a, it's a big project and I didn't want to start fully doing it until the HR policies were completed. Where a lot of the way there, but we need to be all the way there. And that comes from, that might sound funny to people who work in the professional world, not having full employee records. This is a municipal problem everywhere. We just don't have the human resources staff to, um, to go back and fix things that were done and to make sure that everything fully aligned. So we want to make sure that this happens this year. Something I've been focused on for a couple of years. Sounds so easy, right? Update all employee folders. Um, you'll hear on the twenty-eighth some research and implementation recommendations for HR. And, uh, you'll see why that, this bullet's here, but, um, I, I owe you some, what would this cost or what needs to be done here? Where might we go in the next ten years in HR, five years, ten years? It's, um, it's one of the town's biggest liabilities. So how do we fix that, given the resource constraints that we have? Um, the easy answer is just have the town administrator do it. And, and I have, I enjoy being an HR director. But, um, you're gonna see that there are some gaps in our, in our human resources capabilities because there are gaps everywhere in, in all small towns, but there are some things we can do about it. And then develop an intern program. Uh, Dan, you, you hit on it key when you said continuity. We've been able to retain some really talented people. Our staff is really strong right now. And, um, there are areas for people to grow, as you saw with Lori Reed. So ma- maybe an intern program would help facilitate some of that sustainability. It obviously helps us with some of the work we need to do, but we need to get more people into municipal government. And if everybody does it, then maybe there'll be more people around to do it.
So on that, I'm sorry.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, uh, on that, on that intern program, which I think is excellent, I was thinking about this, looking, reviewing it earlier. Um, I, I, I think that that vi- the viability of that might, um, improve if it were a regionalized intern. Right? Um, so, you know, the, 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 our neighbor and, and sister towns definitely need all of this stuff too. And so it might be, um, something where we, we can, and whether it's, we, you know, talk about the sort of paid piece of this or, or not, and I, it wouldn't be that much, but interns can be so valuable, especially if, if, um, you know, um, if properly motivated. You know, I think that, you know, we could, we could really sort of give somebody a nice little challenge that if a few of us towns got together, um, and they could sort of bounce around and understand, um, um, how each town works and, and help out from a human resources standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't think of that. That's a good idea. Because we do need some money for this, if it's gonna work the way it should. No, uh, non-paid internships are tough to fill, especially in central mass. So. Um, but there are a lot of people looking to break into municipal government that don't understand how. So the appetite's there. We just need to think about how to pay for it. And I think visualization makes sense. You'll see in the HR study that this is also a recommendation there, um, that we need to call lower-level management positions in order to make sure that this area has sustainable management positions in the future. So.
Ryan, would this be an area where, uh, a gr- a grant might exist that could cover such a program?
I think so. Um, I think there's a way to do it. So an easy way would have been to use the CARES Act, but, um, it needs to be more sustainable than that. So this could, there's gotta be a way to get this done. And that's part of this year's goal, is to, to find the way to do it. So we will. Okay, moving on to budget and finance, uh, very simple one. We have a nice set of financial policies. We use them. We have a new, a town accountant and we let her establish herself this year. Every accountant does things a little bit differently within the parameters of the job. So, uh, we just gotta update our financial policies with some of the processes and procedures we've put in place. It's, um, not that difficult. We just need to sit down and do it. So I made it a goal. The twenty-thirty financial roadmap, this is just a picture in my mind of, let's say you wanted to do everything that you talk about doing. What would that cost and, and how long would it take? Um, I think that's gonna help facilitate conversations. So you hear me talk a lot about in twenty-twenty-three, we have a lot of debt coming off the books. What do we want to do with that debt? Perhaps a roadmap would allow folks to see just the potential of what's there and what might be doing. Do you want to solve the budget deficit? Do you want to build a building? Do you want to refurb the slade building? Do you want to invest in capital and roads? All of those are available. Um, and we should know what we're gonna do with opportunities before they come up. So that's what that means. File for a GFOA award. So this is, how do you make your budget document understandable to the?
Wait a second, I kinda wanna hear what, you know, not unrecorded, what Katie would think the GFOA would stand for.
No, you probably don't.
No, yeah, I do. I definitely do. Right, anyway, sorry, carry on.
So this is an organization that they look to make budget documents more transparent. So you don't go to town meeting and go, what is this and what does it mean? So the, the budget document that I've been building, um, mirrors this, this process. It's just a way to template it out. So I'm, I'm like to throw it in to see how far away we are from, you know, some of our big town peers. And then that'll tell us what we have to keep doing in order to, to make a stronger budget document. So it's simple. We're just gonna take our budget document and submit it and see what they say. And then, uh, we have two union agreements with our TPW and police. A lot of this ties into what we already talked about with HR. Where do we want to go with this opportunity to, to look at our agreements with our employees? So this time I would love to have a, it doesn't have to be voted or discussed tonight, but a board of selectmen rep or at least this, uh, a session prior to these agreements, so that we go in with, uh, with some goals and, and take advantage of, you know, once every three-year opportunity.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, you.
So that's, um, in the budget and finance area, just some simple, accomplishable goals that'll continue to build on, on some of the transparency and directedness we've been using with our budget process.
Uh, my question was, where are we at? Um, I can't recall, uh, with the police chief's contract.
So he's up this year as well.
All right, why don't you add that to that?
So I'm targeting October to start those processes, believe it or not, and the FY twenty-two budget process. So it just never ends and always comes quicker than you think.
All right, well, let's, can you, can, can we put on, you know, Bobby, if you don't, if you don't mind, on, on maybe, um, uh, on our next agenda, which might be the twenty-eighth, right, that, that, uh, an item on there to discuss who, uh, what board of selectmen member would, would help out, uh, be, uh, you know, on that sort of team with you?
You could, we could also do, the board could also do an executive session to discuss negotiating strategies. Um, also something that's done a lot to, to guide that initial conversation that I have with the, with the unions.
Okay, so just, that's fine with me. So just so we're clear. So, so are you saying, um, that, whatever, are you, we, should, instead of doing what I suggested there as part of a normal agenda item, just make an executive session item? And then we can, uh, discuss, uh, that as part of it and, you know, then, um, uh, make a decision then and, and then have that, um, out, uh, during, uh, you know, the following open session?
Yes.
Okay. I kinda got there. My brain wasn't really working.
Okay, and then. Okay, and then infrastructure. So road maintenance plan, continuing with five year projection. I think that's been successful in that it helps residents see the bigger picture. It doesn't change of the resources that are allocated, but it does, it does allow for people to see just the enormity of the problem. The attention that's being paid to it and what you would need to fix it. So, um, road maintenance plan is, is doing its work as a transparent document. So we should keep doing it. The, uh, investing for future grant, investigating future grant opportunities for additional road maintenance is, is always a focus. And I just want to make sure it maintains a goal. Itself as a goal. We could never catch up with the money that we get for roads and I don't think we could even override our way out of the maintenance issues we have. And that makes us just like every other town in New England. So, if we're going to be successful and stay ahead, we need to find ways to fund it. It just needs to be a goal. And then, um, this one sounds very Ryan-ish, but visit and document every major piece of infrastructure in town and ensure it's on a plan for eventual updating. So this is culverts, bridges, dams. We're most of the way there. We have looked into ways that we can do this or perhaps use grant monies to do this. But we need to know these things, um, so that we can apply for the, for the grants necessary and make sure we maintain them. Cause when they're, when they're bad or they go, they go. So just another, another plan or another piece of the puzzle to add to the master plan. Then lastly, so I ask each department head and employee to put together a professional development goal for themselves, a goal that ties to our overall vision. And the vision simply put is how do we demonstrate governmental competence in order to build public trust? So that's what the vision goal is tied to. And then a department goal is how do you want to improve your department in the coming year? So s- simple exercise, three goals. So mine is, um, they have a small town administrator certificate. When you've completed a certain amount of professional development and I will be eligible for it this year. So I'd like to apply for it and see where I'm at. And then, um, I've been a chief procurement officer for three years in February. So I'd like to apply for the full MCPPO license. Right now I have an associate member. My vision goal is that Hubbardson 2030 plan. I think if we laid out a 10-year plan for residents, they would see just how serious we are about making sure that every dollar they give us is spent well. And that, um, these decisions are not made in a vacuum, that there are ways to make sure that you're not overtaxing folks, but also accomplish the goals of service delivery. So I'd like to complete that. And then for department, fully HR compliant, which means finalizing our policies and our employee records by the end of 21.
Okay, uh, anyone have any, uh, sort of final comments on, on, um, on Ryan's goals at this time? Okay. So if not, so Ryan, if you could sort of do what I'm, I'm doing, um, uh, you can, you don't have to distribute them, I guess, at this point, but you know, we only had a few comments for you. If you want to amend, um, what you've got here for your draft to, to bring it in front of us, uh, like, like we'll do with the board of selectmen goals for our probably 28th, September 28th meeting, if that's what it's going to be. Um, and then we can, we can review a final time and, and maybe vote to approve them then.
Sounds good.
Alright, uh, let's see, moving on, um, it looks like we're going to be, uh, we, we, as you indicated, there is no town administrator report tonight, correct?
There is not. The only, um, the only item that I have as a report is because the special town meeting came in recommending to you that you cancel your meeting for next week since we had this meeting. Uh, simply because we need to focus on a special town meeting and then you can see the agenda is already building for the 28th. So, that's just a simple, just say you don't want to have the meeting or you do want to have the meeting because you have some items, but that's the only, um, thing out there that I wanted to give you for information.
Meetings canceled. Uh, okay, item seven, uh, we've got policies to review. We've got the, the plowing of private ways. Um, this is the, the second read, which means that we have seen it before. Um, and if, if, if anyone, uh, hasn't, I, I did take a look if anyone has any comments on it or, or, uh, if wants to, you know, push this off to another meeting, that's fine with me too. Otherwise, um, Brian, if you want to say anything to it, um, feel free, I guess at this point, and then we can decide whether to, to, to act on it.
What we had discussed at the la- the last time this came up was, and this is in your folders and I'll share it with you. The athol. The athol policy, which is pretty clean as a policy overall. Number five and six are items that, that Travis has been asking to include in our policy. So these two items, and it don't have to be verbatim, but that the policy states, if we're going to plow a private way, it needs to be capable of being plowed. So it sounds really simple, but it, it, it helps for the DPW director to have this in writing because while we don't mind plowing private ways and we invest in them because the law allows us to, we really can't do it unless the roads are plowable or we definitely can't do it if they're going to damage our equipment. So, there is no specific need to throw this in here right now, but it, it is a good practice and it protects our, our highway director, our DPW director. And last, um, if a road wants to be considered for, for plowing, it, it needs to identify itself, which again sounds simple, but we need to plan for these things, staffing and cost. So, um, these roads should be submitted by a certain time each year and, and Travis recommended the athol policy, which is September 1st. So if you add those two, you bouncing with me here? Can you see our policy?
Yes.
So these would be added to, this policy. Or we could modernize the whole policy and adopt one similar to athols. So just looking to see if the board's willing to add those and if we can take away some of the redundance that's in this policy here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem adding those. I mean, that's, you know, it doesn't feel like we're purposely trying to exclude people or, um, anything like that. It seems reasonable for it. I, I don't, I think maybe if you could, you know, get a finalized version to us so that we can, we can, you know, I hate to do that, but it, it does seem like it's unfinished still. If we could get a finalized version to take one final look at to make sure we're understanding what we're looking at and voting on. Okay. Okay, moving on. Unless anybody has anything else? No? Okay. So we have some appointments and resignations. Um, you want to take us through these?
Yes.
While you're doing this, I, you know, I think I, you know, we always, uh, uh, ask, um, our DPW director and specifically Travis the last few years to, to come give us a, um, uh, winter preparedness plan sort of thing. I'm not saying next meeting by any means, but you know, if we could maybe just give him a heads up that maybe in mid to late October, because you never know. You know, we had that, that hallway, uh, Halloween storm a few years ago. That was just crazy. Would like to hear sort of, um, how things are shaping up with equipment and everything else for this year. Can you, can you look at the, the meeting schedule and do that?
Yes, late or mid October sounds.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so the resignations in front of you, um, Donald Tardy, who did a great job for us as a mark driver is, um, has resigned, is looking for a different opportunity. So that was effective September 2nd, 2020. So we're just informing you of that. And this week we'll be advertising for that position of mark driver. Mark driver, as you know, is a, um, position that we're reimbursed for. So although we get charged on our cherry sheets, uh, the majority of the cost is paid by the mark program to provide low income transportation in our community. So uh, it's really important. It's a, it's a very small investment by us and, um, Don did a great job driving for us and, and we'll miss him and good luck in his next opportunity. Susan Fox was on the CPC and asked to, to, to resign. No, no real reason given, except that she's ready to move on. And then these three appointments were missed in, um, in our annual process, but are important. So Chip Pedarossi is, um, active on our open space committee as a volunteer and looking to make him a formal member. Bobby's going to be our, uh, ADA or disability coordinator. So our first point of contact for grievances and, um, and other items related to the ADA law. And then we need to have both a male and female sexual harassment officer. So Chief Parent is our, our male section, sexual harassment officer, and we're looking to appoint Lori Reed as our female sexual harassment officer to serve as a point of conduct, contact for staff. Uh, looking for information or for, um, policy enforcement.
Okay, so can we do a, uh, what is it? Maybe two, um, two different motions here to, to accept the two resignations and then to accept the, uh, the appointments or to, to formally appoint, um, those three. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Someone want to do that?
Make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, resignations of Donald Tardy and resignation of Susan Fox.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, we will vote roll call. Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous?
As far as the motion for the appointments, is, is there any waiting period or is that being, is that waived or anything like that?
You don't need the waiting period. Just, these are straight appointments.
Okay. I'll make a motion then to accept deployments of Chip Pedarossi on the open space committee. Roberta Tebow on the ADA coordinator and Laura Reed's sexual harassment, uh, female representative.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, um, then can we vote, roll call? Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, sounds good. So we'll move on to, um, item nine, wage authorizations. We don't have any. Item 10 minutes to approve. So, um, this is from our, our last meeting, um, where it was just all of us, uh, with no pad. So this is the one that Ryan said that we didn't have any, um, recording. You know, honestly, I, I didn't, I didn't, um, I didn't look at these yet. So I, I, and we don't have a recording. So I, could you just, you know, push this one off till next time, Ryan?
And if Bobby, if you could just email directly to the board for them to review, please?
Uh, okay, next would be, uh, item 11, which is committee updates. We, we actually, we moved to town, city, uh, town center committee to quarterly last year or the end of last year. And we actually have a September meeting on the 17th, Thursday, the 17th, I believe is what it is. So I kept it, uh, going right now. Um, I'm not sure if we're going to keep it. We're waiting to see if there's any additional correspondence from TEC or Mast dot, but uh, we just got a, a pretty significant bill from TEC for, you know, money that had been previously allocated by town meeting, which, which, um, you know, more than anything shows they're really working on it. And I've had, uh, three or four conversations with John Shikes at TEC over the last couple of weeks. He's just called me to, to ask about very specific comments Mast DOT had about some, you know, whiffs of, of, of sidewalks and pavements relative to different properties and, and things like that. So they are, they're definitely working it. Um, but that's just an update more than anything. I'm not sure if we're going to meet or not, if it's necessary, but, uh, if we do, I will report back. Um, item 12, matters not reasonably anticipated by a chair. I have one. I, I, I just want to, uh, bring it up now, I guess. I, I'm not exactly sure where this is going to go, but, um, I contacted, uh, Copman and Page, our town council. Because I am potentially, uh, I'm looking for counsel outside of the town of Hubbardston. It's actually for work. This is very recently. Um, for work and I called Carolyn Murray, who, who, you know, we, we've had, uh, for, for years to discuss whether or not there would be a conflict if she were, or not she, because it definitely would be if it were her. But if there was somebody within Kip, Copman and Page who could provide very different services for my company or me. Anyway, she's investigating whether it's be a conflict or not. I, I know it's a very large firm with people with all sorts of different disciplines. Um, but I wanted to ask, so I just figured I'd bring it up here, uh, in case it comes up and it's a full disclosure sort of thing anyway, but I'll, I'll report back when she gets back to me. She said she had to look into it and think about it and then, and I'll, I'll let everybody know. So that was something, anyone else have anything, um, you know, that, that popped into their heads they want to bring up now?
Well, I have a committee update from the EDC.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. You were going on a roll. I'm just going to let you go. Um, so the EDC has been, you know, helped with, with Ryan putting up those lovely welcome to Hubbardson signs. They are now starting to, um, search out now that they're getting back on a roll from the whole COVID thing and meeting again. Um, looking for, um, sponsors to sponsor the two signs and then, so that way they can take that money and turn it into more sign for welcome to Hubbardston. So that is a step in the right direction. And they're also reaching out, um, to businesses for Christmas ideas to try to get us all on the same, um, bandwagon with the light bike and the country roads tour. So that way we can hopefully bring some more businesses to our smaller businesses that aren't necessarily on that tour, but to help the other smaller businesses in the area. So that's, that I think is a good thing from the EDC.
Yeah, great. Okay, anything else committee related or, uh, matters unanticipated that anyone wants to bring up? No? Okay, uh, any public or press, um, chat items or anything else, Ryan, that's come up or Bobby?
Don't have anyone and, um, we don't have any attendees right now. So.
Alright.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Yes, second.
Um, I forgot my line. It's, um, not debatable, right? Is that what it is?
Non-debatable.
Non-debatable. Uh, alright, uh, we'll roll call. So Dan, yes, Katie?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.